Alright.
Alright, I would like to call for order the planning commission meeting present. Uh, excuse me, absent our commissioners, Teal, Overes, and Mo. We're calling four people.
Mm-hmm.
I'm opening up the meeting, any public comments? I see no one in the queue online and there's no one present. So, over to the comment at six forty-one and close with six forty-one.
Okay.
Um, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting number twelve, two thousand fourteen. Any comments or amendments to the meeting notes? Well, not really, okay. Again, motion is, uh, day and second here, all of you say aye, our motion is approved unanimously by the four present commissioners. Next on our, um, one point here, we might be done before it like this back some, so. Is to review the planning commission procedures packet that Kay went through the cloud of workers. It was about hundred pages long. And I was able to just review. Over to that, any comments or suggestions?
We did receive comments from, um, the chair, Neil, and I think all of those can be, um, made, um, good points overall and, um, if nobody had any issues with any of her comments, the one, uh, change we would make is on page thirteen, we would, um, change it to, each speaker is entitled to speak only once per item. Um, that was her suggestion and the language was a little bit unclear as far as, um, if there's multiple agenda items, you know, you wanna let somebody speak to each one, so. Um, other than that, that, you know, she noted the changes at the five minutes instead of three, um. There was a question about, um, the sign-in sheets and we, yeah, our last hearing, we should have probably had them, um, and then our attorney had commented on this that, you know, we used to say you have to say your name and address and some people don't. Um, I guess if they don't feel comfortable even giving their last name or their address, they don't, we can't make them and so, um, but having a sign-in sheet's a good practice cause we're trying to write their names and spell them right and at least that way it can be coming from them and they're providing what they're comfortable with, so. Um, yeah, otherwise the updates were just meant to, just, they hadn't been reviewed in a while, um, clarify and, um, just, good to review.
Point here that she mentioned about the five minutes, uh, coming. And she was like following the three minutes from the city council, but it's five minutes here. Okay, so we didn't, I, I didn't know that.
I think is, I mean, we've seen both, I think, the fact that she was across the board, you know, consistent, that's what was important, but, um, yeah.
Check a few other things, but I think there's also our public hearings section, like our hearing number section of the code that says three months. Hmm, so.
Yeah, and, um.
All out three months. I know that on the city's website is also the public participation link from the planning commission page and so, whatever it is, we need to just.
If we can make it five and that's what you guys are fine with, we'll do that.
I mean, most people, I feel like a, like, don't.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Alright, when our attorneys looked at it, they were fine with five, so I think it's up to us, so, um, yeah.
Um, I will bring up two other things.
Excuse me, could you update the attendance?
Um, uh, item three D, item number, say, that commission.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I think Commissioner Teal called this out at some point, it was, um, there we have, uh, five seven, um. So, when I was appointed, um, I remember this was a big, um, emphasis of the form of the move.
Mm-hmm.
I had attendance. Call me, those city council meetings, myself, uh, just as a president, but I have a best of planning commissioner representative. So, I, uh, and I'm gonna call this out, she mentioned obviously the relationship commissioners, council group, come to Mayor Miller. And then, just last week, she said the same thing. I'm in favor of that, but I would just like to emphasize that. Conversations about, I mean, I need to make sense. Not everyone can make room meetings, cause usually it's a city council, it's about the same meetings.
Yes.
So that's a big, big amendment, so I just, I don't know how that scheduling would look if we were to encourage people to attend. Or if we just say volunteers, but that's something, once this is, you know, we're in the near, this is.
Another option for you, cause the council meetings are always very structured and one more, a little bit less opportunity for conversation. So, the council committee meetings, um, that's where a minority, you know, three members of the council, um, define the topic. Means you bring things up to the full council and that's much of a conversation, or why did you guys bring this forward, what was the idea of this one? So that's another option. Those are during the day, so it's probably more difficult, you're looking at schedule.
Yeah, I, I, I love the idea, but, um, I think it's, I mean, I was just a recommendation, since I don't have everyone who wants to attend, but, um, if we go that route, I'd love to just have a little bit of, uh, for sure.
That's good.
Okay, uh, that's something I want to bring up as well.
Yeah, maybe at a future meeting, we, why don't you guys, would you wanna consider like, each of you picking a month that you'll go to a meeting? Or something and, or just commit to going to one and let, um, people know, like, hey, I'm gonna attend this one?
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea.
It's pretty small, I need you by quarters.
Right, no.
I would say many possible, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and we, we had changed the time of the meeting a little while back and six thirty seems to be good, but the week is also, we don't have to meet, I think Rebecca liked to have it the same week as council, but we don't have to do that, we can be off, we can do two and four like we used to do. Weeks two and four, um, nobody seemed to care their schedule wise, so.
No matter what.
Yeah.
Not just because my circumstances changing, but it's always been for me.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I have no kids at home, so.
Yeah. See if the pulse was close.
Yeah, I think we can like this, this, uh, really, okay, who's like available to come to the next, uh, city council meeting, Mark will be, not like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe it's based on the agenda of the council, maybe it's a finance thing and there's not as much, you know, planning involvement.
Okay. Or that, that, the workshop, many meetings would be, I mean, much more valuable than, you know, than city did.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for sure, and you would see stuff early, like sometimes things come there for a temperature gauge before they come to you. So, for example, like the development agreement.
Okay. Also, we're talking about, um, 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 seven, that it's a very organized development, so, kind of which role.
Mm-hmm.
I really like that a lot.
Yeah.
So, with the list of, while you have planning commission meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're not at the beginning stage, we're usually in the end stage of what's something gets planned. And the beginning stage and something is in the house, so you can give the, the, the process.
So, the day it, uh, it was very, very, I think, into one of the part of the.
Right, just kinda say, here's the objective of the meeting, this is why we're asking for the comment, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
This is probably gonna be too late if you have an objection to something, it's still been a little too years ago. It's not that long, it's not, what can you do this week?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's a good suggestion. Are there any other comments about, uh, our information procedures changes or things?
Um, I, I have two comments, uh, one, it's thirty in here, it's not something that has been changed or anything, but, um, and I, I like the idea that, um, commissioners should be called up by name to speak, so that if someone's going back through the audio and listening, uh, for accessibility purposes, it's good to be able to know who's actually speaking.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's not as formal as city council meetings and whatnot, and this is a much more conversational, um, group. You know, the way things, we discuss things, but we're starting out for considerations, so. I know in the past when I recorded a meeting or something, AI would transcribe them. Uh, if you don't know who's speaking, you know, the AI can't assign. Who part is the man or, additionally, if you don't know, if you're from the public and you don't know who's here, you don't recognize who's, or, or talking, so. So, it's something to consider, it's already in there, uh, I know we definitely kill the flow, but not though.
Is it, uh, the chair, you think, that would call on, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, didn't announce your name.
The second thing I, I had a question about is, uh, do city employees, is there a code of conduct? Like in the handover.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I wouldn't barely describe like code of conduct, it's, I'm sure there's some exceptions, probably so.
Thank you, if, if there's a code of conduct, I think it'd be nice to just, uh, refer people like, I'm commissioner, so adhere to the city's code of conduct.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think that's a nice thing to add on for reference, otherwise, I don't think it would be a bad idea at some point in the future to write some code of conduct, I mean, this general kind of describes specific behavior, but it also doesn't really describe what consequences are and that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Like, for example, you know, if you don't attend a meeting and you don't get anybody noticed, what does that mean? Uh, is there a number of meetings you can just bail on?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, without notice before, is that in here?
Yeah, so it's from the last season or year.
There, I don't, yeah, I remember there was like one danger.
Yeah. One, yeah.
Sorry, I, I didn't know, I'm related to. Yeah, what, wait, one danger? Uh, no, no, I didn't get any. It had just, it was, I don't know what was that, but it was like just like general. Yeah, okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess whatever.
You were referring to gray hands or this.
Or, I'm sure, you know, just something like that, so people know what to expect with their own behavior and, like, you know, know that others are aware of what.
Yeah, yeah, if that's something that you guys like, that should probably be, just to formalize it. I'm likely, no, not that it's a hard passing, but like after three absences, they lose their position at the discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, things happen, right?
Yeah.
What I remember reading was an unexcusable.
Yeah.
Well, again, it's, it's, so, planning, yeah.
Those are all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Alright, um, who would like to move to approve the changes to the procedures, what we have amendments that we may discuss, um, change that would be squared out.
So, I just want to make sure we understand what the edits are, so, you, you talked about adding something about rules of conduct. I don't know if that we have something that's that specific in our employee policies.
We might not have anything available at the moment, right? That makes sense, so maybe we have to say in the next week, we would have a draft that was proposed.
Okay, so this, you're looking for this to come back?
Yeah. Is that what we're thinking there, because we won't have it existed currently?
Yeah, or, so if you find a machine that changes.
I think I could, I think maybe if it, if we do find it, there's something already there, we could email it out to you too.
Okay.
I was saying, Mike, I don't know that we have to bring this back to another meeting, I think because it's kind of informal, um, procedures for them, that I was proposing making edits and then sending it around as the document.
Yeah.
Um, is.
Oh, yeah.
If you see issues with it, well, you can, it's alive, we can still make changes, um, if you notice something later, but I don't wanna take up more meeting time for it, um, unless there's something like major that, you know, that I, I can definitely communicate it out, the changes that remain, clean version.
That is.
Yeah.
What can you approve, whatever.
Final version.
Version.
Yeah, you don't get to do this with total amendments.
Okay.
Alright.
Commissioner spoke, all of you, fingers say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously, you now approve, I will introduce the spread. The next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-five work plan, or they would nineteen of the conference.
Alright, yeah, we have a busy year ahead of us, so I was kinda hoping that has as a comp plan, we have tend to kinda breathe and catch up a little bit, but there's a lot of things that we have to do, um, for consistency with the comp plan, and then also just throw out everything that we've been on the back burner for a long time, what we won't be able to get to. So, running through those, first of all, municipal code amendments. Uh, the primary thing is our accessory dwelling unit amendments, you've seen some of that. So, you remember back in the summer, we had our intern, Trevor, um, Roselli, who prepared some of them. We brought those to you, you provided your recommendation. After that point, we got additional comments from the state saying you need to actually modify definitions as well. Um, so some of our definitions were, with some, with definitions, also allow E D U's for multi name. Uh, so, we'll be bringing those back to you. And then also with that, we also, we want to change our non-conformant use regulations applicable to downtown commercial zone to allow people that have a single family home in the downtown commercial zone to also have an E D U. The way it is heard right now, that's a non-conformant use, distinct families not allowed as a standalone use, because if there are accessory dwelling, it wouldn't be allowed. We want to change that regulation to make that allowed. Um, critical regulations, we just have some minor amendments to do to our mapping. Uh, we got some comments from the state, they felt like our mapping language needed to be, uh, just to reflect, um, that at all time, it's not a remapping effort itself, it's just reflecting, um, that applicants need to go to the best of the science and to our criteria regulations to create their own mapping. And that our mapping is not the source of it. Um, zoning map, so, just for the follow-up from the last meeting that we have, where we have the public things. Uh, we'd like to be split out with parks open space or public facility zone, if private versus public, so that'll be a follow-up, actualizing. Impact fees, so this is a, a big one. So, we have some new state requirements that we need to, um, adjust our impact fees based on the size of the unit, I'd be based on bedrooms with four feet. And that's a much more fair way to apply those impact fees, so that somebody with a mansion is paying the same rate as somebody with a full, uh, uh, one bedroom unit. So, we bring that forward, we also want to harmonize our credits across our different impact fees, that would park or stormwater, transportation, uh, fire, a number of different impact fees, and each one of those, it's got a don't shout here with its own exceptions. And we wanna make sure that those are consistent, and you've got an portable house that's under, you know, sixty percent AMI, wherever it is, you get a discount, no matter if it's park, fire, transportation. Just to make sure it's a little more clean and easy to, um, understand. Uh, landscape regulations, we've got something that we wanna do, um, you recall, we had our previous, um, natural resources element of our comprehensive plan that described certain agriculture properties that were subject to additional buffering. So, when we, um, added in our mapping, Holgate Farm and Metterburg Farm to those maps, which then require notification that you are future property owners, you're living next to agricultural land, you have to expect impact, that, um, potential smells, things that are associated with agriculture, just so it's like a head up. Um, with that also, though, there's some landscape buffering that applies over to this property north of the St. Pauli Valley Trail. And we need to change our code, so that same buffering, which is actually very large, doesn't apply to properties adjacent to Holgate, because those are fully different contexts, they're public property, and there's not need to that big buffer. We could also look to see that whether or not that buffer is still relevant, it's very large, I personally feel like it's too large. Um, so that's something we can open up and take consideration of. Also, with that, uh, right now subdivisions, um, actually any development at this point, requires maintenance bonding for landscaping, and so we require a three-year maintenance bond to make sure that landscaping and so, uh, at least last for three years to get established. When you're dealing with a subdivision, and the HOA is formed, and that HOA, we've experienced this a number of times, they start to have a lot of interest in how that landscaping is maintained. And it can create conflict between the city as the bondholder and the developer who's responsible for creating that landscape. Definitely where the, the go-between and the policeman holding the bag of money. And we wanna get out of that situation, so what we'd like to do is have the homeowners association be the holder of that bond. So, we need to look into letting that, um, the legal ramifications of that, but that would get the city out of all this back and forth, they're not gonna mix. Um, warm base code, we just have some follow-up that we need to do to that, uh, for mapping, to make it consistent with our new updated zoning map. Uh, and then there's a number of ambiguity, ambiguous provisions and just clarification about how to apply. Affordable housing, so this was something that was important to some of the council members as we brought forward a comprehensive plan. They were concerned about, um, where affordable houses were occurring and potentially interested to expand the opportunity for things like height in certain areas of town when it's tied specifically to an affordable housing project. So, we'll be bringing back a, preparing an affordable housing analysis and possibly bringing back some provisions associated with that. Sign regulations, this is a big one that we haven't backburnered for many years. Our sign code is, is pretty out of date and especially inconsistent with, um, constitutional law, so there's been a number of Supreme Court cases that have talked about content neutrality, that you cannot regulate the content of what a sign says, there's a lot of limitations on types of signs, that, uh, signs have to be politically completely neutral. Um, you can only regulate time, place, and manner, and our code goes beyond that. So, we need to end that. Um, let's see, chapter eighteen ten, that's our just general zoning, um, table of uses and performance standards and important national standards. There's some general cleanups that we want to do within that. Uh, so that'll be coming to you later in the year, and then our non-conforming use regulations. Um, we have some cleanups that we wanna do when you have a non-conforming use that is, or a non-conforming site, not necessarily non-conforming use, when a site, for example, does not have a paved parking lot or existing landscaping, and it converts from one existing use to another existing use that doesn't necessarily trigger old improvements to the site, how do you deal with that? So, we've had the issue, for example, lately where a council imposed a interim moratorium on tolling in found uses because we had a tolling, um, use that might come in, that didn't have to trigger stormwater controls because it was just changing from one existing use to another, it wasn't a brand-new development, it was already built in there, like gravel parking lot. But when you have a change of use with something like that, like it could impact groundwater, we want to create a, a code that describes when certain things are triggered. So, a little bit of cleanup there. Alright, those are, um, our key code amendments, then we'll have a number of development agreements coming forward, so the first one, I say probably coming for introduction in January, is over here on North Bend, East North Bend Way. Uh, we've got the mountain view, what's that one?
Yeah, cemetery, or, oh, sorry, the mountain view, I was looking at the first one.
Oh.
Um, yes, ma- um, mountain view, it's a, where the old Albert Lee was, um, and they need a development agreement because they are proposing first floor residential, so I think it's around sixty-five units, um, for sale, um, townhome style, but they have retail in the front, two retail buildings, maybe a food truck pad. So, we have conceptual plans, we're waiting to hear if that's gonna go back one more time to council committee before you guys, um, because we don't want them to spend a lot of time and energy if it's just gonna be shot down, so, um.
We heard from earlier council committee, they supported bringing it through the process, but you know, the residential residential support.
And the issue is kind of, those lots are so, um, deep, they go all the way to the St. Pauli Valley Trail, so we've just been told time and time again, there's just not a viability in all retail commercial on the first floor for the entire property, it just will not happen, so. We'll see.
Um, also, possibly a private cemetery agreement, so, this is, uh, you and Springbauer, who lives, um, has by, or holds a property, interested to do, just say, family burial plot, which is a private cemetery. And that code doesn't clearly address cemeteries at all, cause it doesn't contemplate them. So, this would be in the form of a, uh, basically like a development agreement that would allow him to do that on, um, his property. And lay that, some stipulations about who's maintaining, duration, and access and so forth. Metal Fort Development Master Plan has a big one that'll come to you in the springtime. So, this is under our, our master plan code, chapter eighteen thirteen. And that lays out that when you've got a large property, you can see on the zoning, oh, you did, they are loaning that there. Um, certain areas are within those master plan zones, you can see the crosshatching, great areas. So, when you've got those larger properties, we wanna think about things like access and adjacency, um, mixed uses, because it is a very large property. So, that's the purpose of the master plan, to lay that out, and a little bit more and provide some public. Um, two thirty main and portable housing project, so that's the city's parcel in downtown here, next to the food bank. And we've got an affordable housing developer that is lined up now. And, uh, we'll be bringing you development agreement that lays out some visions about that with, uh, reductions in impact fees and if there's anything that they're looking to do to increase height or reduce parking requirements, whatever, if it's outside of the, we need to do a development.
It's two, two thirty being long, correct?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure which product was. Thanks.
Yeah.
Fourteen is one that you guys have seen a few years ago, and it's been on again, off again for many years, it's a senior housing project over on West North Bend Way by the river. Let's see if that comes back in. Um, C West Development, Multi-Family, Affordable Housing, so that's the former Marriott site. Where they started the hotel project and venue, uh, they are interested to come in, um, they've explored options to do something that's more than the thirty-five to be allowed by code for an affordable housing project specifically, so that would be something to consider through the long term.
Last one, about the same thing, how about this?
Uh, Mountain View Commercial and Multi-Family.
Yeah, that's sixth, that's the one we talked about it.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so that one has been received, um, but, so if you're gonna see it, it will be Q one, twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Okay. So, all of this is kind of in the caution of if we have time, so we'll have time to obviously get to the, we need to do the high priority things, the things that are required by the state. But further down we get on the cliff, um, it becomes less likely, so seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty is if we have time. So, long-term interim use regulations, right now our code allows temporary uses up to, was it ninety days?
Mm-hmm.
It's some very short amount of time.
Summer therapy, yeah.
Yeah. And then if you wanna go beyond that, you have to go to a hearing exam, which is, it's never made sense, cause that was a huge process. So, what the idea here is allow some use of property, uh, like maybe if it's a temporary storage situation, something like that, or you're not required to do all improvements to the property, but at the same time, you're committing to bring in an application or to get, get rid of the temporary use after a certain amount of time. Uh, next one, performance standards for fortune rentals, so this is one, one on the back burner. We have ERVOs, um, there's sometimes concerns that those can turn into party houses, disrupt the neighborhood. So, this would need to establish some provisions about how. Would you as a home occupation business, but it's a little bit of a gray. You don't have very clear criteria. Um, multifamily tax exemption, so right now that just applies to one property, the River Run Project. And, uh, this would be an opportunity to expand that cap, type reduction, which. And uh this would be an opportunity to expand that cap, tax exemption, which is a way to increase. Uh affordability for multifamily projects, uh to expand that to allow for other market support. And then finally marijuana regulations, right now our marijuana regulations just allow marijuana retail. Basically valid all um entertaining commercial zone. However, those that pay property doesn't allow that use because of hiding federal. So. That's an opportunity if the council is interested to. Uh define somewhere else that it could be allowed. Okay, so again, all I'm permitting. More on here than we have time for.
Yeah, we don't, we want council to uh, and I can listen to this now, we want them to uh kind of approve this so that, you know. And and add anything if there's something we missed, but that way we kind of have a parameter of, like, here's what we're going for, and focusing our energy on.
Yeah, so if you guys are good with this, um we look forward your recommendation, we would take it up to council and we would. Have, bring this to council as a motion that they can pass formally regarding us the work.
Yeah, I'll wish you a good.
Okay.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed again, unanimously, with all.
Move just for a record, you said.
It's a very quiet. Um, I believe that that is the thing.
Okay.
Meeting is closed at seven oh forty, yeah. That whole thing?